Thank you very much and welcome to the August 21 Fisher City Council meeting. And Mayor Jenny, did we have any announcements? I didn't see any up here. Okay. And no proclamations, presentations. Eric, did you want to give an update, anything on the Finance Committee?
We'll just briefly mention that we went over the first draft of the budget at our meeting last week. That went well. Still have some tweaks and some changes we have to make. We'll be meeting again on the 30th, August 30th, for a special Finance Committee meeting. But just want to appreciate the work Cecilia, Selena, and John do on the Finance Committee, but also the collaboration we have with the mayor and his office and Lisa and the City Controller's office. They're good partners to have and we appreciate their collaboration and transparency.
Thank you.
If I had any questions about any items on the agenda for the Finance Committee that reviewed, we'll be happy to take those.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any changes, additions, or motions?
Motion approved.
Is there a second? Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Move to regular resolutions and what we'll do, just for the public, when we get to number 11, we're also going to have number 22 just sequentially after number 11 because they're tied together. So we'll get started on number 7. It's a request to approve resolution to appropriate police and forfeiture funds. Lisa?
All right, Lisa Bradford as City Controller. If you guys don't mind, I was just going to talk about 7, 8, 9, and 10, and then I know on a couple of those, we have to have some public hearings, but to just kind of discuss them all at once. 7, as you mentioned, a request to appropriate additional police forfeiture funds. Basically, this is just a fund that is not appropriate through the budget process. It's money that the police firm takes in from various arrests and we've got enough in the fund to cover the purchase of a new ERT vehicle, which is what this will go to. Then the resolutions to appropriate additional local option income taxes. This was essentially the special distribution that we received in 2016 can be appropriated during this year's, during the 2017 budget process by DLGF. So we're asking for the additional appropriation. This year, it's money that, again, we received prior, so it's in the fund balance. The request to appropriate additional sewer funds, these will be for ongoing sewer operations. They'll be covered by the revenue that we take in with the sewer fund. And then the additional appropriation of road impact fees covers a variety of projects, particularly in the downtown area. These are covered by the road impact fees that we receive that people pay and, again, covered by the fund balance. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions on those four items? If not, we'll start sequentially.
Motion approved, R 082117.
Motion by Pete.
Pete, before we do that, we have to have a, on items 7, 8, and 10, we have to have a public hearing for those additional appropriations.
Even 7.
I know. Yeah, so it's my fault. And 10. Yes, sir.
I thought 7, 9, and, oh, yeah, 7, 8, and 10.
Can we do the public hearing for all three or do you have to do them separately?
Do them separately and just run the room.
Okay, I'm going to open up, we call it number 7, but R 082117A for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on that item.
Motion stands.
Okay. Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the next, I'll open up for a public hearing, which is what we're calling number 8, but R 082117A. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Pete, seconded by John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion on number 9. It doesn't need a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Approved.
So number 9, R 082117B, motion by Pete, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And last one, we'll open up for a public hearing, what we're calling number 10, R 082117C. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Move on to number 11, a request to approve, a resolution approving the development of a Fisher Sports Complex waiver of fees and ancillary documents.
Can we get the PowerPoint up on the screen here?
Yeah.
Thank you. President George, members of the council, good evening. For the record, Chris Kreisel, attorney for the city of Fishers. Happy to be presenting tonight on an exciting development, what we're calling the Fisher Sports Complex. On tonight's agenda, the sports complex covers two items. The first is Agenda Item Number 11, Resolution R 082117H, which is a resolution approving the development of the complex, waiver of fees and ancillary documents. The second is Agenda Item Number 22, which is Ordinance 082117K, requesting to approve the issuance of the City of Fishers, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Bonds. We will be asking you at the appropriate time to suspend the rules and vote on first reading as it pertains to the economic development bonds. Most on the council will know that the city's been involved in working on this project for several years or iterations of this project to ensure that the most successful development comes forward between all parties. And tonight, we're happy to bring forward what we believe is that most successful project. You're going to hear tonight from the sports team, who are going to spend some time talking about the fit that this project has within the Saxony development. Since the last time we had a public meeting about this complex, if you recall, the former project was located on the west side of Oleo, within what I call the heart of the Saxony neighborhood. The project has since moved over to the east side of Oleo Road and the team is going to share some details about that with you. You're going to hear about the incredible facility and the details of it. It's over a 500,000 square foot fieldhouse, which includes six turf fields, 12 basketball courts, a half-mile walking and jogging track, 600 parking spaces, et cetera. You're going to hear about the management of the future sports complex, as well as all the hard work and due diligence that the underwriters of this project have done to best prepare it for bond issuance to the market. Right now, I'm going to take a brief moment just to introduce some members of the team that you're going to be hearing from tonight. We have Rick Arnos, who's the president of Republic Development, Barry Kiesel and Andy Girdam with GK Sports Development, Val Belmonte, who's the president of Fisher Sports Pavilion LLC, as well as Steve Coma and Jay Conrad from BB&amp;T Capital Markets. And there's several other folks from the sports team here tonight as well, who I'm sure will be introduced. As I previously mentioned, the city's been working long in this project and tonight's the final step for the city to allow the sports team to go forward, to seek the necessary approval, so that they can go out and finance the project. With your approval tonight, the sports team will finalize its diligence and prepare to seek financing on this project. So before turning it over to the sports team, I just want to briefly walk through the deal structure with you all. The sports team is seeking to finance the construction of this project and proposes that the city issue revenue bonds, special revenue bonds, in one or more series, and an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $75 million. The payment of debt service on these bonds is the sole and exclusive responsibility of the developer. So in other words, the city is not backing these bonds. The city's Economic Development Commission held a public hearing this afternoon and approved the issuance of the revenue bonds and recommended that the council do the same. Outside of issuing these special revenue to bonds, the city's commitment is twofold. There's a waiver of fee component in this project, as you've seen in the resolution, where the city's proposing to waive all development fees and impact fees imposed for the construction of this project. And the city's also proposing to be a major lease tenant in the future complex. The city has tentatively agreed to a 20-year lease commitment to the sports complex. And in exchange for the city's commitment, the sports team has offered a number of fantastic incentives for the city and as a byproduct, our community. The city will receive approximately 11,544 hours during the school year for these courts during exclusive times. We'll also receive specialized hours during the summer, when school's not in session, and the usage of the fieldhouse fluctuates. The walking and jogging track that I mentioned previously is generally going to be open to the Fishers public on a non-exclusive basis, Monday through Friday. The city's going to receive an office and equipment storage space within the sports complex itself. City's also going to receive three tenant events, where we're going to be able to host city events in the heart of the fieldhouse that you see up on the screen in the turf area. The city's also going to receive 100% of the proceeds of a ticket fee that's going to be implemented on those events, generally occurring Friday through Sunday. It's a $1 ticket fee and 100% of those proceeds are also going to flow back to the city. The developer is requested to enter into a developer obligation agreement whereby the developer will make certain payments in lieu of property taxes on this land in years 1 through 10. It'll be at a minimum of $600,000. In years 11 through 20, that commitment will go up to $800,000. Additionally, the city and Interchange Diversified will enter into various agreements, which provide for the payment of certain bonds and other obligations of the city's redevelopment commission from the tax increment revenue collected in the allocation area. So again, with your approval tonight, the sports team will finalize its diligence and prepare to seek financing of this project. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rick Arnos to begin the presentation from the sports team and come back at the conclusion of that presentation and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Arnos?
Well, thanks, Chris, for that introduction. That was quite a mouthful. But my name is Rick Arnos and I'm president of Republic Development Corporation, the lead developer of Saxony and Fishers. So thank you for having us here tonight. We're big supporters of this project and that's why we're here tonight, really to kind of share a little bit of the vision of this project and why we feel so strongly that this is a project that can be a real wonderful addition to this city. There are, as Chris indicated, there are several members here that will be speaking shortly. Really, one of the hallmarks of Saxony when it was designed, and probably a key feature, was to create an environment that would bring people together in a constructive way. And we've tried very hard to stay true to that mission. And the feeling is, is that this sports pavilion will very much feed into that environment. Once it hits full stride, the expectation is, is that there will probably be at least a million visitors a year. So that would include participants and their families and friends and other spectators. So that's a very significant addition. And a lot of those, of course, are going to be from out of town. Talking a little bit of, Chris sort of alluded to this, that, and it's common knowledge, that Westfield and Noblesville are building sports facilities. And I think really, the thing that people really need to keep in mind is that those facilities are primarily being built to service the local population in those communities. And kind of the secret sauce of this project is that it can, it will reach beyond that. It's going to reach regionally, nationally, and even internationally. If you're bringing in a million people a year, it's very significant. These guys probably don't want to talk about it, but they have very, several of them have very deep connections with the U.S. Olympic Committee and the governing boards there. And while I'm sure that they're not going to be making any kind of commitments, no doubt that there could be strong interest by the Olympic Committee or the national governing boards for having events here, if it works out that it's economical for the facility and for everything. As many of you know, this project has taken a long time to pull together. And in fairness to GK Development, when it was first proposed with a lot of guidance by Saxony, we really encouraged them to locate this facility in the heart of Saxony Village, very close to the Lake District there, thinking that there would be strong synergies. During the time that they were going about and pulling together their designs, there were other users that came in that were on a national scale, that were indicating interest. And consequently, we talked with these guys and said, "Look, this may be coming in. Would it make sense for you to move over to this other location, which is the current location where it's being proposed?" They were amenable to that. They sort of stopped midstream and had spent quite a bit of money in the design, but a lot of the, sort of the bricks and sticks of the basic design, although there was an arena that was, you might recall, there was an arena that was attached to it, and that got jettisoned. But they did. They spent a considerable amount of time and resources in relocating the facility over on the east side of Oleo, right at the roundabout with Southeastern Parkway. And that's where it's located now and that's where it's intended to proceed. And it is really an excellent site because it has wonderful street access and visibility from the interstate. You might also know that this team has spent a lot of time trying to pull together the financing package for this. It's a big project. It's a $75 million project, probably $70 million with a $75 million cap. And I think it's easy to lose sight of the fact that when you go through this, that Fishers is providing important support, but not the financial support that a Noblesville or a Westfield are supporting with those facilities. For example, there's no TIF that will be provided for this facility. That's quite significant. There are no ongoing subsidies for this facility. It's true that the city will have a lease with this facility, where they will get significant blocks of time during the week where, that they can use however they see fit. But that's really being acquired at essentially below-market rates. The bonds, as Chris alluded to, the bonds that are being provided to these, this group will be the obligation of this group. They will be revenue bonds. So the city will have no financial obligation for those bonds, the repayment of the debt associated with those bonds. This is, you know, in our experience, is unusual. And I think you all know that with Noblesville and Westfield, what they've had to do in order to get facilities that are not anywhere near the scale of this facility and their communities. And just to top that off, this is a not-for-profit organization that will be owning this facility. So a not-for-profit. And so what they've pledged to do is that revenues in excess of expenses and debt service will be used and plowed back into education and promotion of youth sports. That is the mission of this not-for-profit. And the makeup of the board is made up of individuals who have had experience at the Olympic level. And so it's, this isn't a profit-making venture for this group here. So it's, in our estimation, it's really quite extraordinary that the city has no financial obligation to the bonds, they have no ongoing subsidy, they're not using any TIF dollars, they have some upfront fee forgiveness. But other than that, this project stands on its own financially. So in conclusion, we're really excited about this. We think it's going to bring people into Fishers, into Saxony, into the immediate area. It's going to be a big boost to that area. And I, quite frankly, we think it's going to be something that this community is going to be extremely proud of in the years to come. So with that, up next will be Andy Girdam. Andy Girdam is a professional engineer and he has been involved in building some very large-scale overseeing and designing and overseeing construction of large-scale facilities around the country like racetracks and other things like that. So Andy?
Evening. Thanks, Mayor. Rick covered most, I think, what I need to cover, actually. I'm going to step through it really quickly, just to kind of go through the specifics of the project itself, just so everybody is up to date on what's actually in the project. So having said that, I probably will mess this up. Talked about where the location is. Location is at Oleo, at Southeastern Parkway. It's really behind the culvers in that area. That is a 40-acre piece of land. To the south, we have the community hospital. To the west is, to the east is an open piece of ground. To the west is Saxony, to the north is St. Vincent Hospital. Here you see a picture of the facility itself. What you'll see here is that it does consist of 40 acres. It is, you see the sports facility there in the middle. It has 11 outlots. The sports facility itself is consisting of 23.11 acres. The building is, as Chris alluded to before, is over 500,000. It's 504,430 square feet. It has, it can accommodate 31 sports. It has been specifically designed according to the requirements of the USOC for those sports, which is an important point to make because that forces into a lot of different elements in the building that actually cost us more, but it does open us up for more NGB events in the facility. We talked about it has 12 hard court surfaces. These can be for everything from dance, cheer, basketball, volleyball, a number of things on those courts. Six multi-configuration fields. What you see there is, and I'll go ahead and click to that and see if we can get to it. What you'll see here is you see the six fields. Six fields are shown here are not regulation. We have three full-size regulation fields in there with a baseball training academy at the end of it. So the building itself is about 1,000 feet long and about 250 feet wide. So and that's just the field itself, turf. That doesn't count the upfront piece. So I'm going to flip back. There's also a, something important here that, we also have a hotel on the site. Hotel is 120 rooms. That is actually being developed by a partner of ours. We don't have any involvement in that from a standpoint of Fisher Sports Pavilion or from GK Sports Development. But that is a hotel partner that has agreed to build that hotel on that site that will be built at the same time as the sports facility itself. In addition, as you see around the outside, there's 11 new commercial lots as well that will be sold off in support of this facility. What you'll see is a lot of restaurants, things like that, come in to support this facility because of the number of visitors that we have every year. Just a real quick front elevation of the building. It's a nice building. It's a series of brick, glass, and architectural metal panels. You'll see an elevation here from Oleo Road. What you do see is you see the graphics that we'd like to use. I realize we have to come back, get those approved, but those are large-scale graphics showing the sports occurring at the facility. We talked about that already. This just shows a layout of the facility itself. In particular, you'll, on the ground floor, will have two fitness areas. One is a high-performance training center for the athletes. The other is a general fitness area. We've got a request from a lot of the parents that they want to work out at the same time their kids are training. On the second floor, we have viewing and walking tracks around the entire facility. That's actually a half-mile around that facility. So it's kind of crazy how big that is. What we'll talk about here in a second, this shows the team itself. We have a number of groups represented here today. We have Fisher Sports Pavilion LLC, and you see the members there and the president there. Val is the president. Val will be speaking in a minute. We also have FSB Management. And FSB Management is a very experienced group that's been here for quite a while. That's, Sue Estep is here from there. You might know them from Round Tripper, which is over in Westfield. That's been in existence for 25 years. So they're very experienced in managing these facilities. I might point out, too, that if you look at the members of Fisher Sports Pavilion LLC, I don't think you could find a more experienced group between that and FSB Management. What you'll see there is groups that have managed everything from national governing bodies for the USOC to universities, have developed athletic directors and facility directors at facilities. And then you have Chris and Sue, who've operated a facility for 25 years in this area. So you do see down at the bottom of there that financing underwriting is through BB&amp;T. You'll talk to Steve Coma in a second. You'll see that we have the construction group, and there will be a performance and payment bond. And the construction group is, has provided an at-risk GMP contract for the facility. We talked about that. And with that, to keep it quick and brief, I'm going to have Val come up and talk a little bit about the vision of Fisher Sports Pavilion.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here. It's a pleasure facing you and I want to, first of all, thank you and commend you for having some endurance to stay with this project to this point right now. I think that speaks a lot of volumes for your community, a lot of volumes for you, a lot of your patience. But the Fisher Sports Pavilion LLC, our mission is to promote and grow amateur sports. Our mission is to embrace amateurism in the country. Our mission is to embrace the Olympic movement across the country. And with that, it's our charge to not only programmatically do that, educationally do that, but also from a facility standpoint, do that. One of the things that my colleagues kind of missed on a little bit, I think, is they're, I think they're underselling this facility. I've been around sports for over 40 years. I've been around sports from amateurism all the way up to international competition, from intercollegiate sports at the Division 1 level to the Olympic movement. This is not a fieldhouse. This is not just a community center. This is a world-class facility. This is a world-class training. This is a world-class competition. It's a high-performance center. It's a center of excellence for sports, education, education through sports. And the reason why I say that, it kind of fits into our mission of what we're trying to do. But I think what's great about this is that if you look at sports in the United States and what we're trying to do to grow sports, we don't grow sports from the top down, from the Olympic program down or for pro sports down. It's from the base. So it's really important for us to become part of the fabric of the community, to provide a recreational center, a community center, to get involved with programs. We have probably one of the best management teams around in Chris and Sue. They've done a tremendous job front-loading what we need to do at the community center. I think what this facility does for us, if you look at my team at Fisher Sports Pavilion, we have a lot of experience. So I have over 40 years of experience. I've had, I've been an executive at three national government bodies. I was at a couple, on a couple committees for United States Olympic Committee. I'm still on a couple international sports committees right now. We have Wayne Sebo, who's an Olympian, 1988 Olympian. He's an owner and operator of a sports and entertainment unit in the ice sports. We have Mike Schwartz, who is a Division III Athletic Director. He's on the Sports Council for the state of Minnesota for their amateur sports movement. We have Mary Clay Brennan. Mary Kay is probably has 30 years of sports experience, 20 years with the United States Olympic Committee as the senior director of sports for sponsorship and for the endowment and the beginning of their foundation. And she's also been a senior executive at three national sports organizations right now. So we have some really good people, really good people that understand. And one of our goals, remember, we talked about our mission, and we talked about growing from the base and moving up. the base and moving up. So, it's our goal not only to make sure that this community and the surrounding communities has a world-class facility to participate in. And what I mean by, somebody asked me the question, what is world-class? And it's not only bricks and mortars on the outside, but what it provides, the experience of the athlete, and what it provides the experience of coaches, and what it provides the experience of the community. So, a place where they're going to be educated at a high level and trained, high and low level, where the experience of the spectators are going to be comfortable, have something for them, have something for the athletes. And the other thing that we're going to do is, if this does become successful and we do move it forward, it's our intention to move forward with all the national governing bodies and to look at a world-class facility where we can bring their regional competitions, their US Opens, their international competitions to Fishers and to our facilities. And we do have that ability. Rick asked me, what makes this special? And the thing that makes it special, it provides everything from the highest level you need to bring in 12 to 22 countries competing for a medal at a world championship to a small sports soccer tournament. It has all that in training, competition, and everything that they need. So, we will be going out to the national governing bodies. We will be using our contacts to introduce them to the facilities in Fishers. We will be doing our best to try to become an Olympic community center representative, as well as the same thing, do our best to see what we can do to have a designated training center site. So, you should be very, very proud of what this will bring to your communities, not only from a sports standpoint, but also an economic impact standpoint as well, and what it could do not only on a local level, but at an international level, especially international competition. Be great to be, bring a world championship or a World Cup of fencing to come in here, where you have China and France and Germany and Spain and Switzerland and the US and Canada and so on and so forth. So, and your community has a lot to offer. So, with that, I'd like to leave it. I'd like to bring Steve Coma up, and Steve is from BB&amp;T.
Good evening. Steve Coma with BB&amp;T Capital Markets. And, you know, I don't have much to add other than, from a structural perspective, given the current market, BB&amp;T could not be more excited to have the opportunity to finance this. We've had a lot of good input from the city, staff, and your consultants, especially Rick. The transaction has gotten nothing but better over the last several weeks with a lot of your input. And from our perspective, the market should be receptive. We've spoken to a lot of institutional investors about this prospect, and given the features that it currently contains, we certainly think there'll be a considerable interest. We've got a lot of work to do in a relatively short period of time, but are very excited to participate.
I guess with that, I'll open it up to any questions that the council may have for either myself or the sports team.
Any questions? Comments?
Just some, just some kind of follow-up comments, just kind of make sure, some clarity on how we're striking. This is obviously a very unique deal structure, and I know Rick calls here from Barnes and Thornburg, and in essence, these bonds are going to be issued at some point, and, but they're not going to be an obligation of the City of Fishers, nor will they show up on our balance sheet. The only thing that we will have, based upon our, in the Budget Finance Committee meeting, is really, in essence, a footnote disclosure, if I'm not mistaken. And just to kind of verify that, Rick, if you want to comment on that, maybe this is not the right time to ask the question or make that be known. But I think there's some unique structure perspectives that we need to make sure everyone's aware of. You know, taxpayers, I mean, when this originally came out, I saw things out there saying, you know, we're, the city's going into $70 million, $75 million of debt. And that's not the case here, correct?
You're correct, John. This deal is not backed by any city funds at all, and it's not obvious to people why that would be, that you have to go through the city. But under the Internal Revenue Code and the regulations, even though an entity is nonprofit, like the Fisher's Pavilion LLC here, it still has to go through a governmental issuer in order to borrow money on a tax-exempt basis. So, by the city issuing the bonds that are payable solely from the developers' revenues, it allows them to borrow money at a cheaper rate, and it extends them the opportunity to then build the project here in Fishers. But there's no city taxes or other funds that would go to repay this debt.
And also, just to kind of take that one step further, costs of issuance, who's paying the cost of issuance? Your fees, everything else, who's paying that?
They would all be paid out of the proceeds of the bonds, and if for some reason this deal does not come to fruition, then the developer is guaranteed that they would pay our fees incurred to the point where the project ceases.
So, again, the city's not under any obligation to pay any issuance costs, that the bonds are not on our books, so it's really totally separate. Just we're using this as, and as for lack of a better term, I, again, I use kind of a conduit, if you will, to enable this to occur, correct?
That's right. It's purely a conduit, and as Rick Erno said, and as Chris said earlier, from a city perspective, this, other than the waiver of the fees that Chris discussed, there's no subsidy to the deal. There's no TIF. There's a lease with the city and the developer for use of the space in the facility, but that's all been negotiated at a market rate or below market rate. So, there's value that the city is receiving in exchange for that lease of space.
And it is a not-for-profit. However, even though it is a not-for-profit, they are paying what's called a payment in lieu of taxes, what's called a pilot. And can you explain that as well?
Sure. They've agreed to make a payment in lieu of taxes, as you described, even though they wouldn't be required to under state law because they're a nonprofit. It would be treated like taxes. What this would do is it would go into the TIF area that's out there and be available to the city to pay debt service on existing bonds, to make, to use for its lease payments under the lease of space that it's going to have or other lawful purposes of the city. But none of that money is coming back to the developer.
Is the intent for the pilot really to pay the lease? Is that the intention? Again, I'm just...
I think that that is the intention, that you'd have some of that money to offset the cost of the city that it's paying in exchange for the ability to use the facility.
So, what we're offering is we'll be a tenant, correct? But we're offering a waiver of some fees, correct? And what are we waiving?
Waiving all impact fees on the development.
Okay, that's the only thing that we are waiving at this point. And what's the dollar amount of that?
It's estimated to be at about $300,000. We're finalizing that number right now.
Okay, so roughly $300,000 waiver of fees to incentivize them to do this project. We have no obligation, except we're a tenant. No debt on our books. We're just using our AAA bond rating. It will not affect our AAA bond rating.
It will not, because it's not an obligation of the city.
Okay. Again, very unique deal structure. I guess want to kind of get those facts out there, because there's, it's real easy to have a lot of misinformation on this, and I just want to make sure, not only that public has a clear understanding, but also I have a clear understanding about kind of the deal structure.
No, it is a very unique deal structure. And then when you look at this type of facility around the state, when communities want to provide this kind of service to its citizens, it usually comes with a price tag of some kind of subsidy, and that is not the case here.
And I remember when, I mean, what's five years, folks? We've been going back and forth regarding this, and certainly it's kind of moved its way along to this, where we're at right now. This just took a long time to get here. So, okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
I have a question. What's the timeline once the bonds go to market? What is your expected timeline in terms of?
The construction period.
All that, right, once...
Andy, if you could come to the microphone, please. Thanks.
Obviously, BB&amp;T has to sell the bonds, range somewhere 30 to 45 days. Then we would like to take that money and go directly into the construction period. We'd like to get the construction going this fall yet. We'd like to get the earthwork moved out there. We do have grading plans ready for permit, so we submitted those right away for permits. At that point, then, we would have about 12 months. So, we would open in September, late September, beginning of October of next year.
John, I think you touched on all the financial points, and I guess this might be a question for Mayor Fattin to address, but the entering of the lease affords us the opportunity to partake in 11,000 hours and some change. The most identified group of users is the sports group, but that's not, that's not going to be the only user of it, right?
That's correct.
It's going to be parked under Parks and Recreation and maybe just...
Yeah, I think it will...
Hit on that a little bit on usage.
From an operational standpoint, it will act and feel much like our ordinance today for fields, where priority would be given to sports so that we can ensure we meet our youth athletic needs. And a lot of what we based the 12 courts on was the idea that this is what they needed from feedback from sports. But beyond that, I think we have more than enough hours to be used for several different things, whether it's pickleball, whether it's soccer, basketball, you name it. I really view this almost more as, think of each one of those hours as a token, and the city will hold those tokens and then disperse them as needed based on the needs of the community. So, in one given year, maybe basketball needs it more, and then another year, maybe it's turf, and then another year it might be something else. The idea is that we will be allotted a certain amount of time. The other thing that's really interesting, Chris touched on this, is there are some unique other attributes, like, I believe there's an office space available for our youth athletics groups to use in the facility. I believe there's also, is it two or three events a year, Chris?
Three events within the fieldhouse?
Three events a year that the city can use the entire fieldhouse at cost for basically running that. So, we would be able to put on a large community event of some sort if we chose, or if the schools had something that they wanted to do. It really is an opportunity for, to make this facility more ingrained in our community in unique and interesting ways.
So, summarize, the sports is kind of the first priority, just based on, sure, number of student athletes or athletes.
Right.
But then the Parks and Recreation Department will be highly reactive to other groups that wish to use it.
Look, if we're paying for those hours, we want them utilized. And so, the idea here is that that place is maximized. Every hour, every year should be used by our community to the fullest extent. And those hours do not include just the ability for a resident to go in and walk the track. That's something entirely separate. So, I fully intend to ensure that every hour is used, whether it's an adult basketball team, or whether it's pickleball, or whatever, kickball, who knows, dodgeball, whatever other sport.
So, broad utility, community-wide?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
If I may, I wanted to say a couple things. First of all, I want to thank the development team for taking from me a lot of difficult questions. And I know, you know, from my own development experience, this non-traditional use was going to be tough from day one to get financed. And I never felt it was going to be financed under, let's say, traditional commercial banking terms, or at least I didn't believe that was going to be the case. I believe that, you know, having had the multiple discussions with city staff, with other council members, the really important questions and the structuring questions and issues that John brought up really helped protect the city in a way, not only from, you know, where we are today, you know, with underwriting and hopefully the ultimate success of your bond offering, but, you know, ultimately with the operation and the continued obligation that the city will have backing the facility. I'm going to be supportive today because what I feel has been worked through, but I'm going to make a request to the development team. I know, I think many know, that I've been, I was a past president of HSC Sports. Clearly, they're one of the major groups that's going to be active, you know, using the facility. But I think there are so many things left to be defined. My request is going to be that you all, as a development team, remain flexible, flexible to what may be an evolving need with HSC Sports, flexible with the Parks Department, but also flexible with the community. I know for a fact that there have been requests made for usage of the jogging track, pickleball. I view this as a partnership. Even though we've been protective with how we, as a city, are underwriting this, it's still very important for you all and with our support. And I guess my request is, again, that you kind of remember that, that with a partnership, it will continue to evolve, and that as you hear of continued needs and, you know, whether that's brought by us as a community, or whether that's something you identify, that you continue to be flexible to make sure the community at large is best prepared for that kind of question.
Any other questions?
Okay, a couple comments that I had were, I think it's a better size. I think that without the arena and the garage, at least getting started, is probably in a better spot. I think quite candidly, that's why some of the years went by was, maybe it was a little bit too big for the market to have an appetite for. So, I think it's in a better spot now. Some of the things that I noted in the appraisal were, you do have some competition with Westfield and Noblesville. That's a negative, but there is a positive in the Fishers component, which we're discussing tonight. So, I would think a little bit, I know it was mentioned tonight by a couple of the presenters, that Westfield and Noblesville are a little bit more local. This one's a little bit more regional or national or international. And I think Westfield's not quite local, so I think that there is some competition. So, that gives me a little bit of, I guess, trepidation. I understand the bonds. I think it's a good way to go, but at the same time, Fishers is a component of that, maybe supported, is a better word, Fisher-supported bond, not a Fishers bond. But just for the sake of time, where I kind of come down on this is, we've asked multiple questions leading up to this, and the one thing that I had was, there was a pretty high fee that the developer gets in the very, very beginning. That has been shifted so that it's more in the, a little bit in the beginning, and then more as the project goes on, and I understand that. But in my mind, I think it's still a little bit too high, and for Fishers to be a component of this, it all rolls into the whole picture. Whatever fees are, they all add up to the construction cost, everything else. So, I will not be supportive just because of the structure that it is. I'm supportive of the project. I think, I think it'll go well. I think it's a better size and shape, but just the current mechanics of it, I can't get over that hurdle.
Any other questions?
Just to clarification, I'm going to go ahead. In a recent job change that I made about eight months ago, although my current firm has no business dealings with the Fishers operation, there are some ongoing conversations about future activities with this group. So, I'll be abstaining from this vote, because I want to make sure it's clearly above board where I sit, although I was one of the very first people involved with this project five years ago. So, I'm very happy to see you sitting here.
If no other questions, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So, for the first one, we're just going to have a motion on Resolution Number 11, which we'll just take a straight vote on. Then with the bond ordinance, we'll need a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first hearing.
Okay, sorry, it said third reading, so, okay. So, is there, sorry, John.
No, go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R. 082117H.
Motion by John, seconded by Selena. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay. And one abstention.
One abstention.
Motion passes. And do we have a motion to suspend the rules for 082117K?
So, moved.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Now, let's do the same. Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd.
I'm not going to make a motion on the bonds.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Somebody else.
You just said that. I apologize. Motion by Todd, seconded by Selena. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And one no. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
We need an actual motion to approve.
We did.
Did we just approve it?
Yeah.
We need both.
Chris, we were so fast.
No, not going to ask again. We're good.
The way government works here, fast.
Five years.
Would have taken 10 in Indianapolis.
Oh, thanks very much. Thank you. It was fast. Is it approved?
Yes.
It is. And as they're leaving, actually, Lisa was going to do one thing real quick. We've got a couple Boy Scouts. I don't want to make you guys nervous, but you're probably here for your citizenship badge. If you want to step forward and just introduce yourself and which school you go to, we'll help you get that badge. If you want to step forward and just introduce yourself and which school you go to, we'll help you get that badge.
Hi, I'm Josh. I go to Fall Creek Junior High. And we're part of the Fishers Troop 109 out of Fishers United Methodist Church.
I'm Caleb and I go to Fall Creek Junior High.
Hello, I'm Zach and I go to Fishers Junior High.
Hi there, I'm Amy Bolandbacker, Assistant Scout Master of Troop 109. We're actually working on a communication merit badge through the Patrol, the Zombie Patrol. So thank you for recognizing me.
Well, thank you for coming, thanks guys.
Just a reminder, David, this item requires a public hearing, item 12.
Number 12, okay. So move on to 082117. I, resolution of the common council of Fishers making preliminary determination to enter into one or more leases. Leasing.
At least for record, City Controller, we're going to kind of talk about 12 and 13 together.
Okay.
So basically, this is just the first step in the process to finance improvement around and for the amphitheater back behind us. Basically, what these do are make the preliminary determination that there is a need for the project. And that the city can then start taking the steps to enter into prospective lease financing with the Anheal Building Corporation. In regards to number 13, we have received signatures of taxpayers that indicate there is a desire for the project.
Okay. So for number 12, which is 08, or R-082117I, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this, please come forward. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or a motion?
Make a motion.
Would it be helpful just to kind of review the scope in general?
Sure, I can touch on that. As I mentioned the other day in the Finance Committee, very seldom there's a, an event night that goes by at the amphitheater where I'm not barraged by Facebook posts of moms and dads upset that their kids are standing in lines of 30 to 40 people waiting to go to the bathroom at the amphitheater. Last year, I believe, we had 125 to 150,000 people come down here for various events. And we are a creature or a victim of our own success. And we're looking at a broader investment. Hopefully that will last decades to come in regards to expanding the amphitheater stage, roofline, new restrooms, and just really creating a unique experience down here as we see more and more people down here. I think if, I wasn't able to be here Friday night, but I understand it was really something to see just everybody out and about in our community. And we dipped our toe in the water with our first amphitheater when David and I, I think we're the only ones around here. And, and now it's, it's really great to see us have an opportunity to expand and really build something that the community can be proud of. And, and really, to be clear, this is a preliminary determination. So the intent would be before we come back for the final bond approval by council, that we would have a concept plan to share with everybody. We're just a little early in the game so far to, to bring that forward.
I think the other thing worth noting that Mayor Fattin has discussed in Finance Committee is the construction timeline and making sure-
Yes.
We, we orientate the construction post-
Yes. Yeah, yeah, so the timeline's going to be very challenging. It's post-boobash, pre-farmer's market. So October 31st, we literally got to have a shovel in the ground and we got to be back open by early to mid-May. So this thing's going to move very quickly and hopefully we can get it all done. We figure our philosophy on downtown now is just rip the Band-Aid off. Let's get it all done at once and be done with it.
Is there, is there current theme for the boobash for the mayor's and the staff?
I'm not in a position to comment on that. Councilmember Peterson.
Thanks, Rich, I kind of went too quick on that. And thank you Scott for describing some of those. And I think you mentioned the, and I mentioned that to a couple of people and I had one question from the public. Obviously, the stage is important, the restrooms, I mean, you can see that, you can see the line. But you're thinking about more the entire campus and basically from this all back.
Entire campus, yep. And even just something as simple- Yeah, and something as simple as if you ever try to take a walk around here and the sidewalks just terminate in random locations. So it's really taking a higher view of it and saying, how do we connect everything from a pedestrian standpoint and really, really make this somewhere that can accommodate the, the type of traffic that we're already starting to see here. And especially now that the police guys are leaving, we can really do something nice.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion for R-082117I? Motion by Eric? Seconded by Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now is there a motion for R-082117J? Motion by Todd, seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, number-
Yeah, we, we had a public hearing.
Yeah. You had to note that too, didn't you Jenny? I opened it and closed it, okay.
Could you take a public hearing on J, or could you take it on I?
Just number 12.
Does it require number 13?
It is not.
Number 14, R-082117K, resolution approving the First Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement. Brandon?
Good evening, for the record, Brandon Dickinson, Director of Economic Development. This is the Central Indiana Orthopedics Project and consistent with the EDA, with the city, Fishers Redevelopment Commission, Economic Development Corporation, and Central Indiana Orthopedics Real Estate. We have a minor change to the EDA where under the original EDA, the Redevelopment Commission was to receive all excess TIP not needed for the next debt service payment. And so now, kind of reviewing that, the parties have desired to make a minor amendment to allow TIP to be used to pay the next payment of debt service together with any prior shortfalls. So if in a TIP year, it comes in under, if the debt service comes in with a shortfall compared to what the TIP generates, the developer, as these are developer-backed bonds, would be liable to pay for that shortfall. This just allows there to be a reimbursement of that shortfall payment in a preceding year where there's TIP excess. And then after that payment's made, all excess TIP, again, flows to the Redevelopment Commission. And this was something that was in the spirit of the deal, but not in the black and white of it that was noticed later. So we wanted to make sure we notated that explicitly and that's what this amendment is. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions?
Motion to approve R-082117K.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Selena. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we have three items together, Captain Heff, 082117, and then same thing but A and B.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Jerry Heff, Captain with the Fishers Police Department. For your consideration this evening, we'd like to make an amendment to Chapter 91, our animal ordinance. The spirit behind these changes were truly to reflect some updated language, some new definitions. And then we wanted to re-vact some old language that no longer applies. So the, the main definition or the main terminology that we would like to change, we used to call animals with a bite history, we would declare them vicious. We simply want to change that terminology to dangerous. That is more current with National Animal Control Association language. But then the spirit of that is just to make sure that we define that if we have a single serious injury bite to a human, that we would declare that dog dangerous. If we have a dog that has multiple minor bites, we could declare that dog dangerous. This also allows us to add a new category of potentially dangerous. This simply gets into those circumstances where the dog has not bit anybody yet, but it simply makes very aggressive movements. It may have an attitude of attack, it may charge somebody on a sidewalk, it may come out into the street. We're trying to head off the, the potential that we have to wait for a bite before we get into a situation where we can put some control measures in place. Updating the definition, we wanted to make sure we understand what direct control is. There was a little bit of ambiguity with what a leash is and when a leash is required. So we updated that. Proper enclosure, we wanted to make sure that we all understood what that means. The old ordinance required a second fence be built. That is a little bit challenging for animal owners as well as not really conducive to truly restraining or controlling that animal. So we want to just have proper enclosure include a fence or a structure that will not allow the dog to go over, under, or through. And then require some signage on that. And then back to the potentially dangerous animal, we added language in there that does not allow for electric fence. It won't allow the dogs to be solely controlled by an electronic means. There were no significant redactions, we removed old language. There were days when the police department or the city could, could hold a stray animal and the owner could come pick them up. We purely use the humane society now. So with that, we're requesting that the council approve the ordinance. We would like the ordinance to be approved on first reading. And I respectfully request the council to suspend the rules. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have over the animal ordinance.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, please.
As a, as a mother of a son who trains dogs, one of my questions when I read yours was, what do you define as provoking the dog? Obviously, if a kid goes up and tries to hit my dog with a ball bat, that's provoking, you know? But if someone is yelling and screaming at me and making obscene gestures, is that provoking my dog?
You know, you ask a very difficult question when it comes to provocation. I would more be inclined to a physical act against the dog. I would extend that to an act against you. I don't know how we would interpret language, whether it was yelling is enough to be provoking that the dog would come to protect you. But certainly, I, I feel that we get into simple things of certainly somebody being aggressive, somebody teasing a dog, somebody running a fence with the dog, somebody pulling on the dog's tail. You know, you even look at, there are situations where people have startled dogs. And then what's going to be our interpretation then?
Exactly.
So I know I didn't necessarily give you a direct answer, but if you're in a verbal altercation and your dog comes to your defense, I doubt that that falls into provocation. It would fall into a different category of what's the dog trained to do and what's the spirit of what, you know, happened during the situation.
I mean, I just think that there's too many situations where, you know, without the provoking being defined, I, I have issues with this just because, you know, we train dogs. It is really where I am, so I'm prob, I'm going to be a no on these.
Are you okay with voting for it to be voted on tonight?
Yeah, it can be voted on, I don't-
Okay, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, we can suspend the rules.
Okay. Any other questions?
No other questions, I'll make a motion to suspend.
I have a question.
Yeah, John?
So one part talks about restraining potentially dangerous animal. Electronic fences not suitable restraint. Kind of, can you clarify, can you give me a little, little color on that, please?
Sure. You know, there's even, you know, historically, an electronic fence wouldn't even be considered a fence until the company probably named it that. So it's, it's truly a training aid. We have dogs that routinely run through a fence like that. What this, what these recommendations do are set up three levels of how to restrain your animal. And your standard animal is going to be able to be restrained on your property with an electric fence. If we've had a history that we declared the dog potentially dangerous, and that could be a bite, that could be a first bite, so we've had a human bite, we are simply saying that that electric fence is no longer suitable to say that the owner has control and we go to the next level.
That makes sense.
If we get to dangerous, then we want that fence to be a little bit more stout, no over, under, and through. So Great Dane, four-foot fence on potentially dangerous, probably okay. Great Dane on a dangerous animal, six-foot fence, et cetera, locks on the gate.
Thank you. Motion for to suspend a real still stance.
Okay, motion, motion to suspend by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
And is there a motion for 082117 to be passed? Motion by Eric, seconded by Pete. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And against?
Nay.
Second one, 082117A, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend.
Motion by Pete?
Second.
Seconded by John. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve.
And now motion, same motion to approve by Pete, seconded by John. We'll give that to you.
Sure, take a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item 17, motion to suspend.
Motion by Pete, seconded by-
Sure.
John? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
One opposition. Motion passes, thank you very much. And actually, yeah, while you're here, Captain, Chief and Assistant Chief, obviously, everybody on the council, we just want to thank you for everything that you guys do. The men and women on your staff, they do a great job every time I have an interaction with them. And I know everybody else does, so we just want to thank you. Okay, moving on to number 18, 071717A. There's not Tony, it's Kevin.
Going to be standing in for Tony as he's out of the office this week. For the record, my name is Kevin Stotts. I'm the Assistant Director of the Planning and Zoning Department. The item in front of you tonight is a text amendment to the city's Unified Development Ordinance. So that would be our zoning ordinance for the city of Fishers. The planning staff has identified a change that we would like to make which would allow for an encroachment into a rear yard setback. So this encroachment would be for 50% into the rear yard setback, which would allow for decks, covered patios, such as this with the shade structure over it. And then finally, a three-seasons room. So you have your roof structure as well as screening around there. We feel that this change to our Unified Development Ordinance will help reduce the amount of variances that we see go through our Board of Zoning Appeals as it is a regular request by a homeowner to put on a three-seasons room or a deck or a, a shade structure over their existing patio. But we do feel that a 50% encroachment should be the maximum. We've also set in a parameter that says that these encroachments shall not be closer than five feet to the rear property line, and they cannot encroach into an easement. We also provided a definition to help identify what a sunroom would be and to make sure that that does not change into a living space. So with that, staff would ask that the council hold a combined second, third reading and approve this item as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions, yeah Brett?
Yeah, Kevin, first of all, to you and the mayor, Chris and everybody else, I want to personally thank you and the residents of Breton Falls. Asked me tonight to make sure that we thank you, since the majority of the BZA were coming from Breton Falls. They just wanted to say thank you very much for listening to them, responding to them, and coming up with a solution to the problem. Thank you very much.
I, I also believe this was a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission. I don't think there was any remonstrance. So with that, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on second reading.
Motion by Pete, seconded by- Seconded by Selena. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye, sorry.
Now a motion to approve 071717A.
Motion by Pete, seconded by- Cecilia? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to 19, 071717B. Press to approve voluntary annexation for 8844 East 121st Street.
Good evening, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you is for a voluntary annexation for the property at 88- The item before you is for a voluntary annexation for the property at 8844 East 121st Street. Staff recommends approval of this voluntary annexation. Told third reading and approved the voluntary annexation.
Okay. Any questions or comments or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to number twenty, 082117C, request to approve 1.96 acres from R-2 to the station's PUDC, 9712 East 116th Street.
Good evening, for the record, Ross Silvery, Planner Two with the city of Fishers. I started in May, so it's good to first come and see a lot of you here. I'd like to thank Leah for all the help she's had with me as well with Mayor Fadness. What you have here tonight is the station's PUD. It is located at 9712 East 116th Street. You can see it's located right next to IKEA Way as well as Cumberland Road. Currently, it is next to the Yard PUD as well as Delaware Commons just north. Delaware Commons is home to LA Fitness, the Fresh Market, the future Bank of America location. This location is also next to Kroger and the upcoming Kroger Fuel Station. Currently, it's zoned R-2. This PUD is looking at, making it a PUDC with the C2 commercial as its underlying. Right here, you can see an elevation of the proposed one of two structures at East 116th Street. One thing we'd like to note here that the department is supportive of is you'll see a street wall with this development along 116 and not a parking lot. That's one thing in this PUD that we're very supportive of. Another elevation right here, you'll note the pedestrian activity area that's activated in between the two buildings along with a material change. It's a little bit different from the brick and the red material, I think we've talked about that at previous PUD or meetings. Kind of getting away from that, just a little bit different contemporary structures, see that wood composite steel and glass. This is the site plan, three things I'd like to highlight on there again, you'll see that pedestrian activity activated in the middle. In the middle right there, again, you'll see that parking lot is shifted back of the lot. It's a very unique lot right there along Lynn Drive and East 116th Street, so the parking is in the rear. And then there'll be a sign feature on the corner there, similar to other developments that's happened throughout the city of Fishers. The timeline for this currently, tonight, of course, is the approval of the first reading, and then we'll take it to PUD Committee as well as the public hearing with the Plan Commission, and then hopefully back here in October for the second and third reading. With that, the staff recommends that this is held for first reading and provide any feedback. We also have Fager Baker Daniels here representing as the petitioner, if you have any more questions for myself or for Rex.
Maybe we'll bring the petitioner up and thank you, welcome aboard, too.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden, I'm a partner in the law firm of Fager, Baker, Daniels, and I'm pleased to be here representing KLC Realty. Thank you, Ross, for your presentation. From KLC, with us this evening is the owner Charlie Key. From the engineer on the project is Crossroads Engineers, Current Architecture is the architect, and Melissa Garrison is here this evening. And then our land use consultant, Rex Ramidge, is here as well from our office. First off, you're seeing a little bit of the benefit of a lot of back and forth with the Development Department. The initial design and thoughts were shared with Tony Bagado and the others in the Plan Department. There was some good feedback. We also heard from, over the last several years, I think Ross mentioned it, from the Plan Commission, particularly different people mentioning with strong voices that they'd like to see something other than red brick and tan ephesus for our retail developments. Melissa and her team at Current Architecture did what I think and Tony Bagado thinks and hopefully you all think, really some amazing architecture, something that's really terrific. The uses, I won't go into a whole bunch of detail, the standards, everybody went through a lot of work and effort over the last year on the Yard PUD ordinance, so virtually all of those standards, including the parking, the architecture, design, those standards are similar to this. There's a few things where the C3 was the default district for the yard, we're only doing C2, so there's some things that's just not going to be applicable here to that. We also are not seeking the taller height that was in the yard. So basically, it's taking the same standards that everybody worked hard with and apply it to a smaller site that's essentially going to be seamless once you see the development all work out. With that, would you happen to have any, take any questions or any guidance or homework you'd like us to look at as we go from here to the Plan Commission? Otherwise, we thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? Looks really good.
Okay.
The only thing I had was kind of same, same thing, I like the architecture, I was a pretty guy, I don't mind red brick, it's very near and dear to campus art. The only thing I wondered about was between the Kroger and the Yard, I just want to make sure this isn't going to be an island, so to speak, because you've got the drive to the west and that's actually connected to the Yard, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought. And then I had always thought that this lot went all the way back, but it doesn't. It actually stops and then Kroger comes behind it. So I guess the future questions for me will be more to Kroger, or really that, I just mean that development in general, just to make sure that there's cross connectivity between the Yard and the Kroger area, and also that there's a buffer, because you've got some condos to the south that, part of what the Yard did was to create a little bit of a buffer, but it's more important as, as that Kroger area develops to the west. You can see their parking lot there.
And we did talk about that with the Yard, and any of that cross connectivity will likely have to happen further south where the Yard is, this is the legal drain.
Yep.
And so there's topography as well as the drain itself.
Yeah. I just, I thought it went back a little bit further, so...
It'll have to happen back there, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or is there a motion?
And I think, David, you're right, I think just to the, if you go, continue going east, that's a Kroger new gas station, which I think is going right there.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, okay. Yeah, have first reading.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we'll... Yeah, so we'll go to 071717J, request to approve voluntary annexation for 49.6 acres known as the HSE schools. Kevin?
Thank you, for the record, Kevin Stotts. As this is a request for an annexation, voluntary annexation, it's pretty straightforward. However, I did want to address one question that came about at first and second reading, and that is who is, would the HSE schools or Polte be responsible for the construction and payment of the 126th Street extension? So as you're familiar with this site, the city of Fishers thoroughfare plan does show an extension in connection of 126th Street to southeastern Parkway. However, if 126th Street was needed as the primary access for the Hamilton Southeastern School project or the Polte project, then the developer would be required to build and construct that road. However, in this case, the primary access for both projects will be off of Cynthia and Road. So therefore, we only require the dedication of Wrightaway for our thoroughfare plan in order for the city to implement our plan, it's when timing and funding allows for that. So hopefully that answers the question that was asked at first reading. I'm happy to answer any other questions you have related to this voluntary annexation. I would like to introduce Andy Ward, who is representing HSE schools for this annexation, so he'd like to thank you.
Good evening. Andy Ward, I'm a land use professional with Church Church Hill on Antrim. Our client, handling southeastern schools, is planning on building an elementary school on this site. They would like to break ground in November of this year, if that's possible, with really opening the school for November of 2019. But really, just wanted to introduce myself tonight and see if you had any questions on this project.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Pete, seconded by Eric, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Andy, it's good to see you again. Okay, so skipping twenty-two, and then item, any unfinished business? We have listed item number twenty-three.
Yes, David, if I could have the floor, please?
Yes.
I'm actually going to step up.
Okay.
Good evening, for the record, John Weingart, Fisher City Council, South Central District, 10235 Woods Edge Drive. I come in front of you before for an item of new business. As I've discussed with many constituents as well as my council at various times, at this point, we're coming forward tonight to add an item to the agenda to, for us to consider adding a stoplight at the intersection of 126 and Hoosier Road. So at this point, I would like to have a motion to have this added to the agenda, please, and I'll make that motion. I'll make...
Motion by Todd, seconded by Pete, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's added, or it's added.
Thank you very much. As I have shared the actual report by NF Engine that justifies and warrants a traffic signal, which I would like to add that to the record, Chris, if you don't mind, this evening. And as you may be aware, as far as what we're talking about, what is that, where's this, what's it cost and where, where am I proposing that it comes from? We do have funds, as we've discussed in our budget discussion, as well as tonight in work session, in the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, we do have funds available to do this improvement and add this stoplight at this particular intersection that it does warrant it through the study through NF, number one, number two. Above and beyond that, a public safety issue, which especially with school being in session now, as we're all aware, it's a very dangerous intersection. Normally, an intersection of this magnitude would cost anywhere from $300,000 to $400,000, but as usual with our wonderful team here in the city of Fishers, they have saved some parts from converting some intersection aroundabouts, and the cost is going to be done at a very economical level at this point of around $200,000, if I'm not mistaken. So again, that's what my proposal is tonight, and sort of I'd like to hear from my fellow counselors and where they're at on this particular issue.
Since it's in my district, I would like to thank Councilman Weingart for taking care of my constituents. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
John, I also want to thank you for your time with this. I also want to thank the city, because I know I have also received a lot of calls and emails, concerns about this intersection, and I think goes to show the commitment that the city has to its residents in looking, in studying that intersection, also the efficiency that we have where we can cut our costs, and I think the residents will really, be really happy with this, this gets passed today, which I'm sure we, we're all going to pass it, but thank you.
Yeah. Councilor Cobal, as well as Councilor Zimmerman, have all been both, they've also mentioned that as well, and I certainly want to thank both of them for relaying that information on. So at this point, do I need to move forward to...
My only comment, John, and I certainly appreciate taking a look at this, when, when we finished 126th Street as it was going down there, I looked at that 126 and Promise Road and talked to Mr. Fairbach, our traffic, you know, kind of guy there, too, and I said, see, that needs a traffic light, and you know, you're absolutely right, the distance between coming through there and the raceway that that bridge takes over, when these guys come across the bridge in both directions, is astonishing, so I'm hugely supportive. And if there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Actually, go ahead, Chris.
I was just going to say, to clarify, the motion tonight's really going to be to direct staff to prepare this additional appropriation for you. We've got to meet certain notice requirements, have the public hearing, we also have to seek DLGF certification to make an additional appropriation out of the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, so if you make that motion tonight, we'll get going on our end, bring it back to the council, hopefully in September.
But that's the motion I made.
Actually, I'll make, let me, I'll do the, I'll make them, yes.
Eric has some comments.
To John's point, with school being back in, this has become kind of more of a front burner issue, so just, and Chris touched on it a little bit there, but from kind of now to project completion, what's, what's the timeline, you know, estimate?
Yeah, so I think we're going to run parallel tracks here. One is we come back to the council for an official approval, which requires a ten-day notice of any public, public hearing on additional appropriation. Then it goes to the DLGF to be basically blessed and certified that we can get, do the additional appropriation. Once we get that, we'll have the funding in hand, but in the meantime, we'll go out to bid to get the project going, and so we'll be running parallel tracks. Obviously, we can't ward the contract until we have the money, but we can go through the bidding process. So our goal would be to still have this done yet this year, and we're going to do everything we can to see that that happens.
President George, if I may, could I make a motion, please?
Yeah.
I'd like a motion to direct staff to prepare additional appropriation of the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund necessary to add additional stoplight at 126 and Hoosier Road.
Motion by John, seconded by Cecilia. I just, I wanted to make sure I wasn't, I didn't make a mistake. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Counselors, thank you.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Salina, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.